Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 6th, 2010. This evening, City Council is meeting at 7:00 with a Finance and Personnel Committee, and at 7:30, we will be going into a regular session of City Council. Chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee, Jim Sands.
Who is going to turn this committee meeting over to a committee member, Nancy Bay?
Does this change us?
Yes.
Good evening.
To your knowledge.
We have a number of things on the Finance and Personnel Committee tonight. We have, in the interest of transparency, there are two items under Staffing. I'm kind of sick of that term, but I'm going to use it anyway. One of those is, in order to balance our budget with respect to the general fund, we have reallocated, probably way overdue reallocated, people who work in other areas to the funds that they work in. We talked already about the recreation reallocation, and now I realize I don't have it. But we're also going to be sending, paying the custodians, the five that are working for us right now. We're going to move one of them into the parking garage fund. So we will have two in recreation, one in the parking garage fund, and then the two in the general fund. So in other words, we will be having some savings on that. So the community center custodian, two, as we had originally in the ordinance, and then the parking garage custodian, one. And that will be in an amendment I'll offer. If you have any questions on this, it's a finely oiled machine. Even as we spoke a few minutes ago, the mayor is handing a new set of numbers. And so the general fund, as you know, is the place where we have the police and firefighters and the administration. And it's the place where we have most of the tax dollars going to, and we probably could if we had to, in the future, adjust the mix. But we've got to save something for the next crisis, and that would be one that we could do. Does anybody have a question? I'm allocating one of the custodians to the parking garage. No? Everybody shake their head. Anybody? Okay. The other thing is, the result of an impassioned plea by the service director, and I told her I couldn't possibly get so excited about it as she was. When we proposed the original pay increase to offset the insurance cost proposal, even though many people are not getting salary increases, and in fact, by the end of the year, maybe we will have some other changes going on, but be that as it may, at this point, we said the people who get steps will stay, will advance to their step according to schedule. We did advance the steps last year. But we would give the people at the midpoint, between midpoint and being topped off, two different potential increases. One was the 1% going to people who have longevity, and then 2% going to those people who don't have longevity. That's a little, kind of, issue that I hope eventually, other than by attrition, we can deal with. But anybody who is, has been in the city for a while, on the city payroll for quite a while, has longevity, and it's a payment that is somewhat unique to the city. I know the university has it every five years, like a $1,000 bonus, maybe, in the non classified personnel area. But ours is every year. And people who are at the high end are getting 6% longevity, which I imagine, when it was put in, didn't seem like much, but it gets to be a fair amount of money at this point in time. I don't know how we can sustain it. So being cognizant of this, and I hope somebody takes up this fight, we have to make sure that the people who are new and don't have longevity don't get the short end of the stick to use the full wheel. And that would mean we give them, offer them a 2% rather than a 1% increase. It's real money in their base. Longevity is just paid. It's like Christmas club, as opposed to the addition to the base. Those of you that do money know that's important. Okay, 1% isn't much. I wish it were much more. So now, with no further ado, I'm going to ask the service director to make her pitch. She said she fell on her sword.
Thank you. Based on this configuration, the 2% to those employees that are still in steps and don't have longevity, 1% to those who are still having the small incremental with longevity. It essentially eliminated 15 of our employees, 15 long-term employees with absolutely nothing. So what my request and the change and the modification that Councilmember Bain is speaking to here amounts to just under $8,000 for the year, and would allow 1% salary increase to those 15 employees. And I really do think that's just fair.
So I told her I would consider it before, but I also told her that I hope this sweetened them up so they understood that when we have to take action later in the year, which we may well have to take, they understand that this is going to happen uniformly. The second thing I said is, somebody's got to watch overtime, because that's a place where we could really, from past experience, and I recounted my, one of my experiences, others of you have the same, have had probably the same thing. Well, does anybody have a problem with doing this? I don't know, it's $8,000. I mean, we spend the money, and it's gone, but we won't have it to carry over. We have to have $8,000 to carry over, and I think it's dubious that we will have that. So I think by the middle of the year, by 1st of July, we're going to be doing something else, even if the university doesn't. Why do we have to have carryover? I was hoping Kathy would be here. But in the absence of the auditor here is what we have to do. We have to pay this, we have to buy gasoline, we have to pay, buy parts in January when we start the year. There's no tax money coming in. If we don't have carryover, how will we pay our first tax, I mean, our first payroll or our second payroll? Because the tax dollars run in at the end of the month, mostly. And so OU, for example, with our 40% situation, will be in at the end of the month. We can't default on our payroll. So we do have to have nearly a million dollars to carry over. That's what it needs. Some people think of carryover as like slough or whatever, but we're, I think there's a lot of concern we won't have any at the end of this year. Isn't that right?
Yes.
We're worried. We're really worried. Anyway, so there it is. Anybody have a question about, I saw Jim with his hand up. What were you going to say?
We're just, we're going to bring up the auditor for that. And backing up to the custodians, just, we're allocating a custodian to the parking garage, but that doesn't mean that he or she is going to spend their whole time in the parking garage. We're just speaking about where the money is going to come from to pay that salary. So it's not in the general fund. Parking garage, remember, is a proprietary fund where it makes, brings in money.
It operates as a business.
Yes.
And right now, it's getting free service from both the utilities billing office and the part, the custodian side of the general fund.
I would assume that for periods of time, that that person would be working elsewhere. The time would be captured and paid out of general fund instead of a proprietary fund.
What we have is, we have three custodians who not only clean the parking garage on an hourly basis, they all three go over and, you know, check for the meters and issue tickets. So what we've determined based on their work and amount of time, that it justifies a singular individual, in terms of the hours, 40 hours a week, is spent in that parking garage. So it's not like I would say Joe, or Dan, or Tom is the individual necessarily, it's the fact that the hours worked merit and justify that charge back to that facility.
And the state auditors will be happy with?
They certainly hope so.
Me too. That's the only reason I ask. It's certainly a justified accounting function.
And that's what it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Want to start jumping up about money? Remember, I introduced this. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is fixed costs, and I guess we could wait since it will take effect somewhat later. But I have an estimate of this, which I will pass to you when we get through probably stop-loss fees, administrative fees. It would be better, probably, for me to just pass it out and we look at it next week, because it'll take, we'll probably be fine tuning it before we get to August, anyway. So single coverage, $43.72, given our increase in stop-loss, and family coverage, $75 per month. You can have that for each pay, which is getting fairly close to what, well, maybe not. I won't say that. I will pass you the breakdown so you see. Now, Jim and I were involved in a prolonged discussion of changing this, and one of the things that we arrived at is the 35%. And, you know, it doesn't have to be that way. My previous insurance provider never said, oh, guess what? We're going to do this, and this, and this. They just said, it's going to cost you $1,600 a year, and you'll, we're going to take it out of your salary. First, they gave us $500, and they took $1,600. Okay? And they didn't tell us how they came up with that figure, they just did it. And so we have this nice little 35% thing going on, but eventually, I imagine, somebody's going to have to raise it up. We actually had a phased-in plan, but right now, the ordinance says 35% of it, administrative fees. I don't believe we checked on it last year. And so now we know what it'll be, 44 for singles per month, and 75 for family coverage, which is a deal. Those would be a bunch of insurance lately. I'll pass it around. Kind of hot off the presses, or at least it's new to my mailbox. Any questions on that? You can change it, you know, you can do what you wish in terms, anything that's reasonable. Just remember the state auditor. I had a discussion, when we were trying to figure out what had happened to the two funds that were, we were adding money to, I asked Sherry last time, and did you find out or have any?
Yes, well, the mayor didn't check on that. Pardon me. And we don't really have an answer.
Oh, okay. You know, sometimes we don't put enough money in at the beginning of the year, but that isn't very common. Maybe there's a bunch, an additional amount of overtime. It just, we have the intern question. The question of seasonal is one that is vexing. Seasonal is generally applied to people who work for the recreation department, who cut grass in the summertime, and prepare the fields, and do the other things needed in the summertime seasons. And I believe that we were, we were approached on taking a seasonal person and making it year-round, and I think we declined, just because we thought already the money was starting to change in a negative direction, kind of skidding. So having said that, in the lands and buildings area, there is a seasonal employee that works right up to the limit, which is about 1,000 hours, 1,000 hours and 40. And there's also a possibility of having overtime in the seasonal line. And management-wise, I trust you'll take care of that one for us. I think we were pretty lonesome to add another position at this point, since we were, and so, you know, there was some question about how this person was working year-round, and, you know, this is not a commentary on the person, this is more a commentary on our dire financial situation. So if you guys will write hurt on that, I'd be grateful.
I believe that change requested was, as opposed to having this individual be seasonal, they be a part-time position, which is essentially the, you're declining?
We, I mean, I think we declined before, we just didn't want to go ahead with it. Unless I have strong recommendations, I'll take it back to the finance committee, or you can take it back. But I think we were just saying, well, you know, what's the argument? What is this guy doing that makes it important? I thought you were going to give me the other thing, which was, I think at one point, when I was asking Rain about something, he, he said we could modify the definition of seasonal a little bit. But I don't think it's necessary, even though somebody said it was okay to do it, I don't think it's necessarily something we want to see, especially if it accrues a large amount of money that we have to pay up at the end of the year, especially if we're going toward next year. So it's maybe a management question, I guess, at this point. Makes it easier on me. Okay, then miscellaneous, what do you have for miscellaneous?
Oh, just a little generator.
Oh, I forgot about the generator, yes.
$40,000 little generator.
Yeah.
That's essentially wishes to transfer the money from the Brine Lagoon Fund. We appropriated that to authorize us to buy a generator. The Brine Lagoon cost has come under. I forget to note.
Yeah, he did a lot of it in-house. He really should be commended for that, because it was a real savings situation, one of our solved problems that he solved. Now he wants the money.
Well, there is, there are electrical concerns and problems going on with the water treatment plant right now.
Yes, I was walking my dogs, I was thinking, hmm, just before I came here. It's either a management problem, which I don't think it is, or it's a design problem. I'd like to have them bring back those engineers and find out why it's.
The conversation we had at staff meeting today was that the fuse box in the three-phase transformers, the ones outside, that last time, we had a meltdown, which was sometime during the summer, damaged the fuse boxes. And I don't know what these look like, but they're blowing fuse regularly, because they're not, they're old, essentially. And what he's doing is, he's, they're putting fuses in, running for, I don't know how many hours, I forget what Crystal said.
About two.
About two hours, blows a fuse, stick another one in. We're trying, we're trying to get some, you know, good-sized, professional electricians in there. They'll get it. In the meantime, this is, it's very obvious that we need a backup generator, at least for this. And remember, when we had the tornado event, we had the east side of town done down, and that was one of the things we were looking at, is needing a, getting a mobile generator to get those list stations up and running every once in a while. We were good for about 24 hours, I think we had, before. We would really run into some problems where we have, see the sewage backup or reservoirs starting to run low. So the, the goal right now is to make a lot of these reservoirs, list stations, and pump stations accessible, so you can plug a generator in, but we also need the generator to move around. We're actually pitching, trying to get a generator from Belkirk before the electricity went on. That's the 24-hour period went during this tornado.
And when was that meltdown again, when no power?
What?
When was the meltdown that caused the problem on the device?
That was in the spring, I think.
Would our insurance cover this? Was it an electric, was it a lightning strike?
No, no, it wasn't, it was just.
It was good old AEP?
No, it was good old age as equipment.
It's only 20 years, I mean, we redid the whole plant in the last 10, 15 years.
This is outside the plant, the water treatment plant.
Yeah, the, we did the water treatment, we did it piecemeal, but we did it.
We did not, if you go out there, you'll see the, right next to Healy, there's the tower with three olds at the outside.
Well, then, you know, somebody, maybe, we should probably get on it then and change it.
We are working on that.
I mean, that was, we had, we paid engineering on this, and we did a whole bunch of different things. Remember the, remember the?
I don't remember the electricals.
PCBs in the well field. I mean, we did have an electrician working on it. Yeah, so I agree, it probably should be done, but I'm just kind of surprised that it comes. You need one, anyway, I guess, right? What device are you going to use? I mean, what fuel?
I believe it's diesel, isn't it? Hold on a second. I don't think I have that paper with me.
Is it a portable generator? Is that correct?
It is a portable generator.
And mind you, I don't want to give the misconception that this is going to correct the electrical problem there, but it is something that we need that could, could keep different pumps running, so we're keeping our reservoir.
Doesn't say whether it's gas or diesel, at this point.
Let me just question. Anybody question?
I was mostly just curious about the accessibility to the generator, and you mentioned it was portable.
Well, okay, what you're seeing is that we have, some of the list stations you could, are designed so you can actually plug in a generator when it goes down. Some of them, especially, I think, the reservoirs in particular, are older that we, they weren't, they're not configured that you can just plug something in, so you're going to have to change the configuration. So it, because realize, when you say, we're going to put a generator, and two things have to happen. You have to isolate it from the grid, and then you have to have a place to put it in where it's not going to damage the electrical system. So some of the designs are, this was evident when we had the power outage, that we had to look at this, and make sure we can plug it in easily without having to go, you know, bring in a bunch of, you know, electrical, you know, engineers to figure out what to do. Does that make sense? Okay. I mean, right now, to say, if you're going, if your house went down, it's not an easy thing, saying, I'm just going to plug a generator into a wall socket and light up the whole house, because, you know, it's still tied to the grid, and you might be, if you're really powerful enough, you're either going to blow out your circuits, or you're going to light up your next-door neighbor's house. As an analogy, it doesn't work that way, as you know, because most time, you probably just blow everything out to do it.
We're also going to have a sound attenuator on this machine, so that it's not, you know, waking up the neighbors if they fall.
We don't want to get sighted by the police.
Do we have questions?
We're exempt from our own noise, aren't we?
Yeah, we're exempt.
But it's nice to be good neighbors.
Right.
So that requires?
I'd ask for it to be considered an emergency.
Keep an emergency call for them.
And a, and a suspension, I assume. There are two different things.
See, the only problem is, because all the emails were the first of December, so I guess it's, it's been in the works a week. I just didn't know it was so imminent.
I think the fuse is blowing out fairly recent. At least it wasn't brought up the last staff meeting, and that was a week ago. So I don't know when that developed, but the conversation occurred just today. The first I heard was today.
When I look at ordinance 12610, generator, there is, I'm not seeing a calls for, oh, okay, I guess we do. Okay, so all we will need is?
Well, other miscellaneous, thanks for coming, Paul.
Are we done? Just, Member Bain, when we do have further discussion about our medical insurance, I think it'd be worthwhile to point out some of the coverages that are included in this. Our policies, speaking of, you reminded me of the work that was put in by quite a few people to make sure that we offered, well, baby care and a lot of other coverages that are not necessarily to be found in general policies. So we really are offering, our policies are giving a lot of benefit to the, to our employees.
Use your pocket to solve that.
Yeah, I think we should go over that. I think you're absolutely right. And also the preventative care that we talked about before, that's there, that just came in in 2008. So we had a wonderful major medical policy without much of the other coverage, and now that of those struggled. All right. I'm going to go make a copy of this insurance thing for you to, right now.
It's on or about 7:30. It's on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a quorum with all members of council present, and tonight, we are meeting in regular session. Under, next item on the agenda is disposition of minutes. I have before us the minutes from November 15th, regular session. Do I have a motion to accept?
So.
Further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Minutes have been accepted. Under communications, I have two different things I'd like to share. One is from the Department of Commerce, which is a notice to the legislative authorities regarding permit renewal objections. And basically, the purpose of this letter is to notify you that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in your political subdivision will expire on February 1, 2011. In order to maintain permit privileges, every permit holder must file a renewal application. If there are any permits that somebody wishes to object to in council's office, is a how-to object to the issuance or renewal of a liquor permit brochure, or I would encourage you to go to www.com.ohio.gov/liqr, and they can walk you through the process of what it would take. So that will be the only time in the next year that somebody could object to a liquor permit within the city, city limits of Athens, Ohio. The next item I have is an appointment to the Disabilities Commission. We have a, what looks to be a very qualified candidate, Roberta Rigante, who has agreed to serve on the Disabilities Commission. I do have before us her resume, which is exactly the type of a background that I would think the Disabilities Commission should have on its membership. And the resume does not include her current position of the Bureau of Vocational Rehabilitation. So is there any discussion any council member would like to have regarding appointing Roberta Rigante? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion?
Is there a motion?
Still move. Second.
I'm sorry, thank you, Debbie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Rigante, for being willing to offer your services to the citizens of Athens on our Disabilities Commission. You are appointed. Are there any other communications any member of council wishes to share? Member Sands?
Speaking of Disabilities Commission, the commission has asked to come to council sometime soon to make their annual report, and I've suggested the first committee meeting in January, which would be the second Monday in January, if that would be fine, to hear a report from the Disabilities Commission. They've been pretty active this year.
Great. Any other communications? Onto reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
The only one I really have to bring up is that we have canned food drives that's going on, sponsored by the city auditor's office. We have a container that's at City Hall, one at the community center, and one at the code-offs. And this, again, is going for food pantries and people who have needs of food. So it's open to the public, and come in and drop a can or two if you'd like to contribute.
Very good. Comments for the mayor? City Law Director Patrick Lane?
No report, Mr. President.
Then on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 11410 is an ordinance declaring a forfeiture, a forfeited vehicle no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm ready for adoption of ordinance 11410.
Second.
Thank you. This is a forfeited vehicle that the city now possesses. It's a 1995 Ford Ranger, and we'll be putting this up for having, having it removed in public auction.
Further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 11510 is an ordinance amending ordinance 05810, declaring certain buses no longer needed for municipal purpose. Again, Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of ordinance 11510.
Second.
Thank you. This is an amendment of an earlier ordinance, as it states, and what it changes in this is that it allows us to dispose of some gilly buses owned by the city, either by donation to other governmental agencies or nonprofit organizations, eBay auction, sealed bids, and what we're adding is to the text is the words "or salvage value."
Further discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Ordinance 115 is adopted. Now on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 11810, it's an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Member Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to consider ordinance 11810 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for this is that we need to pay these folks through the rest of the year.
Further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Ordinance 11810 is adopted. Suspended, I'm sorry. Member Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 11810.
Second.
This ordinance amends the 2010 appropriation ordinance by appropriating from the unappropriated balance $15,000 to general fund, Mayor 101.101, transaction class 100, to cover personnel salaries through the end of the year, and $25,000 to general fund, lands and buildings, 101.112, transaction class 100, to cover personnel salaries through the end of the year. And as we stated, or as I stated in during the committee meeting, we're not really sure why this shortfall occurred, and hopefully, it will not occur again in 2011. But this is something we do need to take care of.
Is there further discussion? Mayor Wild?
Let me point out, one of the reasons why it might have run over is that we don't easily track interns. The fund lines at our accounting system has basically, the intern line is actually at zero technically, and the regular earnings, it's been pulled out for regular earnings. So the actual hours of the interns in aggregate has not been followed as well as we should have, and we'll get that straightened out next year.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Now ordinance 11810 has been adopted. Ordinance 11910 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 12010 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2011. Member Bain?
I just wanted to mention that the adjustments will be made in the final ordinance according to the revisions that the mayor has handed us. We've typically not amended it, but consider those clerical until we get to final form.
Okay. Other comments? Ordinance 12110 is an ordinance authorizing staffing levels and non-union fee scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2011, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend 2110. Thank you. To add 1% salary increase to those members of the non-union ordinance, the 12 or 15 that are currently topped out, as we say.
Further discussion on the amendment only. All those in favor of amending 12110 as stated?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Okay. Okay. So, didn't I just do that?
You did the 1% and not the 10%.
Okay. Okay, so I did the one part but not the other. Mr. President, I'd like to amend...
Would you like to amend again?
This time I would like to amend the ordinance to change the FTE in the custodial lines and add, take, reduce the number of custodians in the general fund to three. We already have two in the community center fund, and to assess one against the parking garage, 730.717. That's the proposed amendment, number two.
Second.
Thank you, Sheri.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the amendment as stated? Mayor Wild?
I think actually we're talking about two in general fund, two in community center, and one in parking garage.
Yeah, the only change that we've made, though, is that last one, right?
Oh, I see, the last. Okay, I stand corrected.
Oh, actually, no, you're not corrected. I'm the one who needed to be corrected because we went from six to two on the front page. But that was already in there, wasn't it?
Yeah.
No. Okay, well then, you are right. Can we amend the ordinance to recognize a reduction?
I think if you want to, we need to, if that's what you want done. Okay.
At this point, I'm totally open to, I mean, can we just change the amendment?
Yes.
So let me...
You're amending the previously passed amendment. Is that what you want to handle?
Yeah, this is the intermediate one.
Okay.
Could she withdraw her second?
We're not amending, we're amending the ordinance again.
Yeah, this is a second amendment. Can Sheri withdraw her second, and can I fumble through, please?
I withdraw my second.
Thank you.
So throw it all over.
All right, Mr. President, this is on round two of the amendments in 121. 12110, I'd like to move to reduce 10112, which is a custodial line from six to two. And this is in addition to the things we've already talked about. And then, then change the, we've already reduced one custodial line to, the total number being five. So now the number in the general fund is, I know Debbie knows this already, is two. And we're gonna charge two against the community center, 271940, and we're gonna charge one custodian against the parking garage. And that would be 730717. I wouldn't know those numbers, but you gave me the sheet. And there they are. So in addition to not staffing those jobs, we've moved some people around with respect to where their salaries come from, and that is the nature of the second amendment on 12110.
Are there questions regarding...
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the amendment as stated this time? And it looks like the administration may still have some...
That's the First Amendment.
Some concerns.
Concerns, they told us what they wanted.
She's concerned about the 1%. But that's the First Amendment. You were actually modifying the Second Amendment.
Yeah, we just had two amendments. It's more fun that way.
Okay.
I would like to point out that if, in terms of reiterations, we're probably up to number five of our staffing ordinance and maybe number 10 of our budget appropriation ordinance. So we've been going through quite a few renditions in the past two weeks. So it's easy to lose track of what's going on here, just by definition. You'd be amazed how many ordinance and appropriations I've been looking at.
Further comments? All those in favor of the amendment as stated?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 12110 has been amended as stated and read for the first time. On to 12210. It's an ordinance amending the fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens. Ordinance 12310 is an ordinance amending ordinance 13207 and the Athens City Code Title V, Water and Sewer Regulations, and declaring an emergency. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 12410 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of acquiring grant funds through the Division of Forestry's Urban Forestry Assistance Program and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that we consider this under suspension of the rules?
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is this is for grant application with a deadline of December 15th this year.
Motion and second to consider 124 under suspension of the rules. Further discussion on suspension only. Member Sands?
We are gonna have a meeting next Monday, which would be the 13th, I believe. And I don't know, I just, I got, I got the information today. I don't know how long other people have had it. So it seemed as though I would like another moment or so to read the new iteration of what we were talking about before. But that's just me.
Can I ask the administration if it would still be possible to get the application submitted if we were to pass it next week as opposed to...
It is the 15th, I believe, and we're talking about meeting on the 13th. So we'd be cutting it fine, but we could do that.
Good one.
I'll look at Paul, because she's the one who's gonna direct Ron to run quickly. I think you can do it, right?
Oh, yes. Again, not giving us much time because it'll meet Monday night, so that means Tuesday, essentially. It's a scramble. And probably for the next item, only $100.
That, I think that would work, yes.
Well, I would like to, I guess I need the second to be withdrawn.
Yes.
Are you moving to withdraw your motion?
Go ahead and vote on it. I just, I'm just stating my...
I would, I would offer that I'm concerned about it, too, and I would like, I've printed up the application form itself. I've examined that. I've examined the map. I would like to ask some more questions and contact some more people for additional information.
I can send council members the application as we have it completed at this point to date, if that will assist you. I'm only accompanying the map that you were...
Has it changed substantially from what you sent to us late last week? That's what I've printed up now.
No, that's...
And I have that, and I have read through it. But I do have some concerns.
I want to make sure I understand. Are you moving to withdraw your motion?
I would like to withdraw, yes.
Are you willing to withdraw your second?
I was comfortable with suspension, since I had taken time to familiarize myself with the work that Mr. Lucas presented. That's just me.
Would you like to see it passed?
I'll suspend my...
I'll withdraw and remove it.
In twenty-some years, I don't think I've ever seen somebody hold on to a second when the sponsor of an ordinance is requested to remove it. I can understand your point, but odd as it is. Okay, so, ordinance 12410 has been read for the first time.
Has it?
Yes.
Your vote, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you want to say anything about it?
Did we discuss it?
No, we have not discussed it. Please, I'm sorry.
We discussed it in committee, though.
In fact, that should help this whole process along, if you do have an opportunity.
It should. So this is...
But it has been read for the first time. Go on.
This is, of course, to address the Emerald Ash Bore. I've done a bit of research on this. I can't claim to be an expert at all. I do know that it's spreading throughout Ohio. And, you know, it's pretty recently, they, so they set up a quarantine of certain counties in the state that had the Emerald Ash Bore or potential for it. And we've recently expanded that to include all 88 counties, which in some ways makes it easier to spread the ash borer, because then you can, anyway, that's complicated. But they've expanded it to include all 88 counties. I think it's really a matter of when it's going to arrive. There's a lot of work ongoing to try to find ways to treat or prevent, although nothing's, there hasn't been a very successful way to battle it yet. It's still being worked on, of course. After we talked about this a couple weeks ago, Ron Lucas came up with what I believe would be a much better approach, and thanks to some of the comments from council. Part of this is to target ash trees that are either, so we have an ash tree inventory in the city, which identified, I think, around 450 ash trees only on the city of right-of-way. So this doesn't include private ash trees. So we have a rating of the health of all those trees and location on a map that was sent out last week. And the new proposal for this grant application would target trees that are dead, in poor health or poor or fair condition at this time. And it's a citywide approach as opposed to a single neighborhood. So this is in your emails that shows the particular trees that are being proposed, at least. One of the important things to note is that any removal and replacement would be done with the review of the Shade Tree Commission, which I think does a fantastic job of preserving the tree canopy in this town. And they probably, more than anyone else in the city as a group, would work as hard as they can to make sure that this is done appropriately, if it is eventually approved. Their total proposal is for 83 removals. About half of those would be trees less than 10 inches in diameter, and the other half would be larger than 10 inches. Some of this work would be done in-house as part of the local match, at least with the smaller trees. That's within our capability. And then, some of the work would have to be contracted out. The total grant is, or the total project would be $40,000, $20,000 in grant funds, and a $20,000 local match, or a $20,000 local match that will include some in-kind, but we don't know the exact mix yet. So that's all I have on that, if anyone wants to ask questions here.
Well, actually, the funds cover removal of the dead, damaged, or not good condition trees, and replacement with other trees. So there'd be 83 taken out and 83 planted. Is that correct?
There would be 80 planted. And I don't know the reason for the three-tree discrepancy there.
Close to it, okay.
Essentially, they would be, yeah, they would be replaced almost entirely.
Other comments? Member Bain?
I guess I would, I have a caution about right-of-way in the areas that are not subdivided. And I think that, although you guys may think you have a wonderful database with trees in it, I think the right-of-way is not as simple as it seems in any place it's not platted as a subdivision. I can give you an example from my own life. But where the center of the street in the right-of-way is totally taken off the front, and I think that's very common among the right-of-way shifts from one side. Look at Stimson Avenue. So I think I'd be very cautious of any tree that is in what you think is the right-of-way in a non-platted area. That would be an area such as Columbia, an area such as Cable Lane, an area such as Mulligan Road, Longview Heights, Old Coach Road. Anything like that is going to have a variable right-of-way. And I know classically, what people did was they'd say, "Oh, the center of the road, 15 feet on either side," but that's not necessarily true. And it's very important, especially if you're cutting down a tree in somebody's yard, and they don't want it to happen. So I was thinking that might be a pattern. I also noticed with a certain amount of interest that, and this is no flies on Iran or anything, but that the, or Alagua for that matter, that the can thing from ODNR really talked about a difference between incidence of affliction or observing of ash bore and infestation. And infestation was really limited to southwestern Michigan, northwestern Ohio, and northeastern Indiana. And I think that's a very important distinction, because I have ash trees in my backyard, and the urban forester walked through and didn't say, "Cut that down, cut that down." But, you know, and so I'm a little, still a little bit dubious about the whole prospect, but maybe it'll be changed over time. I guess my final comment is also that we do not have a canopy anymore because of the power company. We have little stumpy trees. I mean, we don't have it. The canopy is valuable, but it's going fast, and it's gonna go faster with this, with these cuts. Because ash trees grow tall. The ones I replace, just drive up East State Street from the bypass to Madison, and look at the trees that are there. They are stumpy little trees, and they're not gonna get any bigger. And, you know, I just, it's not a canopy. Sorry, I grew up in the city of lakes with a big tree canopy. So I would like to see the old one come back and bury the power lines. But I'm a dreamer, so forget it. But anyway, I'm probably not gonna vote for this, no matter what you do. So there. Okay? And I just want you to be aware of that.
Other comments? Yes?
I do want to share some support from Ann Bonner, ODNR's rapporteur.
Didn't tell me to cut down my trees.
I'm paraphrasing her, but she says that this is something that the city should take advantage of, that it will help aid in our canopy, and that it's a smart thing to do to begin to address the ash trees in the city. So do you want to share that?
Mayor Wild?
The inventory for the ash trees, and we were aware of this before my term as mayor. Mayor Abel actually started, initiated the inventory. I think the last inventory we had was in '94. We had about 200 ash trees. So at that time, if my memory is correct, 194, something like that. My memory comes to that. The anticipation was that we would look at this preemptively, because when it makes it down here, we wouldn't want all the trees dropping over at once. We have some trees, I think the difference between replacement of 83 versus 80 is that some of these trees are under power lines, and to put another canopy-high growing tree underneath a power line is just asking for it to be butchered. It'd be nice if we had all the lines buried at this point. It'd mean carving large swaths of people's lawns and backyards, and just look where the power lines are and just visualize what it would take to tear it up and lay something down. Really, from my point of view, it's not a lot of money, and it's not a lot of trees. I know, I guess, my only concern, of course, is that it is gonna be, the way the grant is written, it has to be done, I think, within a year, if my memory is correct on that. So therefore, it is preemptive in that sense. But it doesn't mean we have to use all the money if we don't have that many trees. I know Ron is very conscious of the fact that there's apprehension on the council side. He's also learned from experience that you need to talk to the owners, the adjacent property owners. He's learned that from the side-on brush mower, brush hog, side-on brush hog. I sat through one of the meetings where he went through his learning experience where he had to side-on brush hog, taking out people's shrubbery. So he knows the sensitivity of most property owners about this. I did, I actually participated in some of the inventory-taking. Some right-of-ways were not inventoried. I remember actually I remember actually being on Forest Street where, if you know Forest Road, it keeps going, but somewhere along the line it just turns into briar patch, and it's like, well, if there's any ash trees there, it's not really a problem. So we really did not cover all the right-of-ways. I, I'm aware that this is a small fraction of them, if you look at 83 versus 450. Again, it's one way to extend the amount of cost that will be entailed by taking, by dealing with these trees as they come down. Infestation, I don't know what they, I haven't seen it. I haven't been to northern Ohio to see what it's been going.
Agreed.
In terms of the, and difference between a Dutch elm disease, which is fungus, that might be resistant. I suppose I know there's no real predator of the emerald ashbore. There's a similar borer, I think, that's out there that the woodpeckers kill, but I don't think there's enough woodpeckers out there to really do the job and prevent the infestation that's going to occur. Unless another, you know, either disease or pathogen or parasite comes along, I don't know how it would stop.
Somebody told me that Floradine would work, but, you know, that's a cure that's much worse than the-
You're talking about injecting it into the xylan-
Soil, yeah.
Oh, soil, okay.
Yeah.
I know they have xylan flow-in injections to trees, but that's what you're talking about, is going to each tree, spending a good chunk of money just to do it, and it doesn't really, it's not really that effective.
But a 10-inch diameter tree is a pretty good size.
Yes. I think the conversation we've had is maybe we can salvage some of the wood, since we can now transport it all over the state of Ohio now. I don't think we can take it out of Ohio. Ohio's in quarantine, I think. I think they've given up the ghost, trying to save it in various counties.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Yes, Member Coon.
I would be interested to know how much of the $20,000 would be in kind. My concern is with our tight budget and the uncertainty of our income, it would be nice if we didn't have to spend $20,000.
And I guess the only point that I would make is, I've been around long enough to see just how difficult it is when you're cutting trees that people feel they own, that they have, in many cases, paid for trimming and healthcare of over the years. And I'm reminded of both Wayne Key when he cut a cottonwood tree up in your neighborhood that some people were absolutely furious of, and he thought he did the right thing because he had gotten a letter of complaint from somebody that felt it was causing breathing problems, what it does in spring. And that was what he considered one of the worst parts of being sort of a safety director right before he died. He was still talking about that. And to reiterate-
The neighbors were furious.
Yeah, the neighbors were furious. And to reiterate what Nancy Bain says, the right-of-way is not where you think it is. If you go up Washington Street, the street right in front of us here, right up the hill, you will find that almost every one of the front porches is, on one side of the road, is on city right-of-way. That's how bad it is. The man that used to sit in his chair, Gary Hunter, I don't think I ever saw him any madder than when the city cut down a couple of trees in what he thought was his front yard. Do you guys remember that? So, anyway, be all that as it may, it can really cause awfully hard feelings, and to use, you know, city funds to cut down live trees because they might get infected is, anyway. Further discussion on ordinance 124. Ordinance 125-10 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application, enter into a grant agreement with the Americans for the Arts, for an art, arts and economic prosperity study for, AEP4, fund grant, and declaring an emergency. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I had been considering whether or not I should move to consider suspending the rules, but after a little cantankerous discussion there, I'm not sure if I should, but there's-
Usually it goes so easy.
It's a second.
Although this is, this is probably a less controversial and a much smaller amount of money we're dealing with. So I would like to move to consider suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and second. Reason for suspension.
We're looking at a December 15th deadline, which was similar to the one we had just been talking about for the previous ordinance, but I feel that this would be beneficial to the administration in helping the expediency of this particular ordinance.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspension of the rules on ordinance 125-10?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Awesome. Can I go home?
You've got one other thing you need to do before you can go home.
I'd like to move to adopt this particular ordinance, 125-10.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this, this particular ordinance is interesting in that it's related to a previous ordinance that we passed in an effort to support funding for an ARC NEA, National Demon of the Arts Grant. And it's for a relatively small amount, $2,500. So we already have that money allocated and accounted for in the budget here, what's in the budget. This particular grant that we're looking at is, as you noted in the title, the Arts Economic Prosperity, A and E P four, Project for the Arts, project of the Americans for the Arts, national service organization for the Americas, a local arts agency which is based in Washington, DC. So that's a mouthful we're looking at here. And they've been doing studies for the past 20 years at arts and economic development within communities. So this particular grant would support that and allows AMAC to, and with Emily Prince's blessing, the program specialist from, I believe most of you received, or should have received her email, and she is supporting of this effort and endeavor. And again, this study looks at the role of arts and culture in the community here and the benefit that the economy can have with the arts associated. State and national recognition, which also is exciting about this participation, this particular project, which leads to tourism and benefits to marketing. Interestingly enough, too, the U.S. Conferences of Mayors and National Association of Counties are some of the partners, partners that look at the partnerships because they then in turn will amplify the data that's published and help publish that data when the, if you're a recipient of such, of this particular grant, through their articles and other sources. So essentially, again, just to keep it simple here, this is an effort to look at the collection of data, working with professionals who've been doing this for a number of years, and to then in turn see, see where the arts and our economy can benefit from that economic development.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 125-10?
Yes.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
Thank you.
On to ordinance 126-10. It's an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for a generator to provide backup power to the water plant. Member Bain.
Mr. President, we have to obviate because the amount exceeds $25,000?
I believe that's a cutoff now.
Okay. So, because that's a four-bit word we can all look at and add to our vocabulary. We already had the arguments and discussion about this. We have developed some serious electrical problems at the plant. I guess they're not new, but, oh, I have to move to suspend. I forgot. All right. I was thinking I'd let it go for a week, but I guess I better not. I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 126-10. Second. The reason for the suspension is that we have been experiencing serious electrical problems at the water plant, and we can't, we've got to keep the water moving, to quote a well-known sage.
Further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspension on 126-10?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 126-10.
Second.
All kinds of things. This ordinance will purchase a generator, backup power to the water plant is the immediate need for it. Long-term, it will be used in various backup situations, apparently. There are some changes that have to be made, but we right now need to have this done as quickly as possible while we provide for the actual improvements to the water treatment plant to, to do the electrical changes that are there. And I think the service director gave, the safety service director gave us a pretty good reason why, so I'll ask you to recall that.
Is there further discussion on adoption of ordinance 126-10? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We move on to resolutions for second reading. R 11-10 is a resolution to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant. We are in a regular session of council, and due to a typo, two of the things on our agenda did not show up tonight. The next item that should be on our regular agenda is a announcements and other business. Are there any announcements or committee meetings or anything that members of council would like to set? Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe Director of CFI would like to make a brief presentation next week at committee meeting for perhaps planning and development or under arts parks and recreation. It could be under either one of those.
Yeah, we'd like to postpone until January, if we could.
You want to postpone it till January?
Yeah. I think our, our agenda is so full with all the budget and stuff that we need to concentrate on that.
I'll, I'll check into their concerns as well. I know they would like to advocate for funding for next budget as well, but I'll look into it this week and consider postponing it.
Because there's, there's also very little action that we can do, and so my, he's fresh in the room.
The only thing I would also say is, there are not very many people in this town. When I was driving around at lunch today, you know, we are in a ghost town here right now, and more people would have the opportunity to see something else.
Likewise, I was thinking of the Community Issues Committee having a presentation about Live Healthy Appalachia, but I hear what you're saying. Our agenda's full, better, better coverage of it, better participation in January, so we'll defer and- We should have a tourism presentation also, delay other things to come up. Okay.
Now, but any member of council on their committee can add a, you know, we cannot prevent somebody, it's only a discussion on doing that.
Or I could always set up a meeting sometime during the week as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, the only thing is, when we do it during the week, we don't have the opportunity for everybody to see it on government channel.
And I don't think it's a huge priority, but I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. Other committee meetings or other announcements?
Yes.
The last item on our agenda then would be an opportunity for citizens to speak on the just slate of items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we are adjourned.